All right, so we're calling the meeting to order at seven oh six. And let's start with introducing Richard. Richard is a protective board member. Do you want to introduce yourself, Richard?
Richard Daugherty, I've been retired for almost two years now. I'm heavily involved with a lot of other libraries. Friends of the Lebanon Library, I work at the Pittsfield Book Sale. I'm also the membership chair for the Friends of the Pittsfield Library. I also run tours at local museums and treasurer for two churches.
And he's a member of our book group and a volunteer at this library as well.
About totally two or three hours of volunteer. Just help with books back.
So he has a lot of time on his hands.
Well, I was asked, and y'all do such good work, that I thought it'd be nice to be able to help them. And I am relatively computer friendly with spreadsheets. And I'm learning about QuickBooks, which is what Kim specializes in.
He's interested in. Interested in, I don't know if that's too strong a word, but yeah, interested in the treasurer role. So not just.
Willing, at least.
I was asked, that's what they said at church three years ago. They tried to retire, they said, do new. No, it's, you know, it's always good to help out, learn new things and meet new people.
And it's something you have experience with the treasurer.
Yeah, I'm familiar how to rock here at a temple. Y'all are doing a lot better than our church.
All right, so we're gonna just wait on every move, hold on, and we'll just start talking about some of the updates. So jump to, like, got the numbers wrong on the agenda. So jump to the planning calendar, just a couple other notes on that. I think, I would say we're probably a tiny bit behind on budget planning. We probably should have already had a meeting in October, but we'll start to jump on that. We need to have a proposed budget to review at our November meeting. So we need to get that together. And we're also probably one month behind on strategic plan, just because we are. So tonight we'll try to vote on one tweet to the plan from the bullets, and then there's a proposed action plan.
And we'll be voting in November on the budget as well, or that's too soon?
We approve it in December.
Approving it.
And so that's kind of two highlights I wanted to touch on. Is there anything insurance can fit? And then, you know what, I just remembered, they did just do something. I'm gonna have to bring it to everybody next month, but I, it's in my, like, keeping folder. They changed some of the terms of our insurance policy, and I need to look into it a little bit more.
What did they change?
That's what I don't remember, I can go find it right now.
I remember insurance on the right.
Oh geez.
Now, I specialize in oil and gas, so your coverage is maybe a little weird to me.
Something to do.
I know how to keep you from exploding.
It wasn't about explosion, that part I know.
I missed that.
They probably jacked around some deductibles.
No, it was something to, what they're not gonna cover anymore. I have to look at it, because it had something to do with excluding exclusions now on those policies.
We're gonna run into some exclusions.
I'll get it, I just have to. Hi, hi, Patty. Patty and Scott, this is Richard.
Patty, nice to see you.
They're both book club members, so they know each other well.
So we were just, we have quite a few books that we're starting, just jumping around on the.
When is your insurance, October the first, or is it?
December, January, there's a couple of different policies.
Liability and property.
Luckily, we've got liability, we've got office, dirty officers, we've got, you know, visibility. Rich, we're only interested in the treasures, and he has insurance background.
I'm the person who specialized in exclusion, so, you know.
I might go and grab it in a minute, so you can see. Okay, so let's jump back, and so now, let's see, we've got. So let's go ahead and adopt the agenda.
I second it. Kim, Kim makes the, I second it. Hi.
And then September minutes, if you've all chance to check out the minutes. Any questions, questions, concerns? Minutes. All right, Kim, thank you, second.
Hi.
So Ari will be joining us a little bit late. Rebecca's gonna be meeting us a little bit early. We do have things to vote on tonight, so I just wanna make sure we're all ready for that. If there are a bunch of votes before we all adjourn tonight. So if we have in our reports, if there, I would just suggest, also to help keep us moving along. We do have some items that require discussion, so if there's stuff that's just updates that require discussion, then we're supposed to kind of move over that quickly tonight. Focus on the things that y'all may talk about. Kim, you wanna give us highlights on director? Lots of room in skin coming up. It was a busy month. Especially our team night seems to be going particularly well, and trying to keep the last team up really high. Yeah, so it's great, so let's see how it goes. Circulation is down a little bit, as is participation in the library, just as, if that's just what happens with everything. Goes down in such a, because everyone went back to school and things happen. The biggest things to know about, I have a standing about policy development, and she has a draft of our internet use policy that I just kind of quickly put together, and, you know, so she's gonna be looking at it. Jewish holiday season was right before, or right after we met, so she's been dealing with my family stuff and. She had a lot of good questions to, so really suggest, though, that we all have the A O A bill of rights printed out, and, you know, that we all know it, so that that can then. Things about policies, so I can send that out. Chance to do it. We, let's see, Rodden came over, he's been doing some work on our computers. Right now, it's really, really cheap to get S S E drives, so all of our computers now have solid state drives, and are. He even switched over our circulation desk computer to the newest one model that we have, so now the staff have the best computer. Which is good, because the old computer, even though it was one of our newer ones, it kept, every time they were, the computer went to sleep, Sierra logged out. So not paying the butt Sierra, it takes a long time to boot up, so it doesn't be done anymore, so that was great. On subject to computers, a couple weeks ago, before the, I don't know, Jody told us that yesterday.
Yes.
So I was doing it again yesterday for Mary. I'm creating a computer that just is, I'm restarting itself, shutting down. It's on the. All the way on the left hand side, right? Yeah. And it's just shutting down. Let's see, the other thing, I met with a volunteer, she's gonna be coming, she was supposed to have started coming today, I haven't heard an end. Obligations, but she's currently, and I think that she might be someone who we could potentially see as a board member, so we'll see how it goes. For pronouns, she's just gonna keep coming out. She is also a gardener, she works over at Snow's, and she has lots of great ideas for the.
What's her name?
Her name is Chris Wasula.
Wasula.
W A S U L A.
And she's a C H, Chris?
Yeah, C H R, well, she's actually Christine, but she does like.
Okay, thank you.
I'm gonna be meeting with the principal of Berlin High School on Tuesday. Try to talk about ways to get the library and I so work together a little bit better. Ten with B A meeting, our one contract is up, I'm gonna vote on that. The fees are going up two percent for everybody in the first year. This is a three-year contract, in year two and three, it can be a five percent increase. And the increase is gonna be based on circulation, so it's really not a lot, significant amount for us, it's small. And honestly, it's not like we could do anything, we need to be part of our house, and otherwise we can't really run, so it doesn't matter. And I don't think they're gonna give us, you know, if we give them our time, I don't know that it's gonna work.
I know, Kim, you're giving away a negotiation position.
I know, but you know.
That one's a non, just to make money off of land, I mean, it's just a necessity. Yeah, yeah, exactly. The prices are going up because fees have gone up for delivery services. We have an issue with mice in the building, they have attacked our candy stashes in. So I called my cat, and they are going to be doing a initial setup of traps, they call them iron cats. They're gonna be all over the building, and then there's gonna be stuff out on the outside as well. They're gonna do the initial setup for 610 bucks. Everything's gonna get treated, and then they'll come for once a month, for the year, for 225 dollars a year, a month. And they will clean out the tracks and deal with all of that stuff. We could do it every other month, but what ends up happening is that the mice eat the bait, and then the bait, and then they end up dying in the walls, which I have already had happen in my office.
You said it's six, six, how much?
Six, 10.
Six, 10.
And then two twenty-five. It is a bit, but honestly, the staff have been, I mean, mouse traps on the circulation desk itself, so I'd rather. Unless anyone else wants to deal with the mouse traps, I, that's, I don't necessarily. It's gotta be dealt with, but it's, that's a lot of money, and your cat's not like what we've agreed, but. They've been here before, so it's, we've worked with them in the past, and that they did pretty okay, so they did give me a estimate for doing something called a trap and seal, I think, where they would go around the building and seal up all the cracks and crevices of the different places that mice can get into. But that would be an extra 1,200 dollars, so I will spend, I just didn't have time to send out the proposal, so I'll send that out, and if we can run it next time, we don't have to do it. It's something that's just like, you know.
Ultimately, that's what has to be done, right? Because until you seal it up, you're still gonna pay for them to take away the mice.
Exactly. So. Right, so for now, I'm just gonna send out the proposal to everyone, get to see what it says, and then we can vote on the next one. Budget, though, I mean, that's, we're having over $3,000. $3,000.
Two twenty-five per month, plus the six ten.
What's two twenty-five? Is it two twenty-five annual charge, or two twenty-five?
No. A month.
It's six, 10, we get started, then two twenty-five a month. Is that, is this trap and seal thing, is that a one, like, 1,200, they would trap and then seal, and then there would be 200 dollars a month?
I think that they said that, once you do that, you have to then get rid of the mice that are already living in the building, but it would not be, like.
So that's actually like. In the long, the smarter thing to do.
In the longer run, right? Let me just pull up my budget, because I did have a spot where I saw.
I wonder if we could do a quarterly thing, once the big one is done. Maintenance quarterly.
There's still gonna keep coming in.
Well, I know, I understand that we have to seal it somehow, or do, or attempt to, but.
We all have different traps from us. So we.
There we are.
I'll do it, maybe. So so far, so far, we have money left in the facility repair line. Lawn care repair line. The lawn care was budgeted 2,500 dollars for the year, and you only spent 1,000. So I saw that as a spot where we could move things around, and then for facility repairs, we spent 1,290, also touched that 2,500, and we've not used all of that.
So are these basically the calendar year, like, so this is December, so.
Yeah, so we have, exactly. We're not gonna have another 20, 1,500 dollars for lawn care, that's not gonna be there, so.
Not this year, no?
Not this year.
Do we still pay for that?
We do, that's only, that's. So, and then I was also like, if we have to, if we can't find the other, another thing. We still have that still going. Well, the other thing we do have is special projects, and we have to be 58,000 dollars in my account, so we're kind of thinking, if we can get it settled for a year, deal with it, so that we don't have to deal with mice getting into the building, and the other thing with the two twenty-five a month, they also include any other kind of bugs and black flies and carpenter ants, and any, there's a couple of other insects that we do have sometimes issues with, that they'll deal with as well. A couple of years ago, we had wasps falling from the ceiling, and. So I said, well, go ahead and do it, if this are not okay, then I can make it to go to the bimonthly, which is still in two twenty-five, so we'll cut it the price. But again, we've been here every month to get the traps and bait and all that stuff, and change all that.
It does have to be a year, we can do six, one layer, six months instead, during the season when mice are a problem.
I can find out. I think that it was, I think it's a year.
Did you check with any other companies, or did we end up just?
I went with them, because we've been with them before, so I just called them and said, we've done this before, they've already, they had already sealed up, like, about four years ago now. They had done work as well, and they were, when I did it the last time, they were the cheapest. So I also got a little sneak out, that we had mice droppings and stuff, so I was just like, I need to do this quickly.
That's, I mean, that can cause diseases, you know, it's not a good thing.
If it was, if it was just in this room, which is where it's been in the past, and we haven't seen anything in this room yet, but because it was on the circulation desk, and that's where everybody's.
It really does, I think, make sense to seal up, spend the money to seal up more than say, let's. Get rid, so we just, I mean, just another time to kill one, another one's coming in, it's gonna be never a name. So I can send a proposal to that. Something that requires board approval, as long as there's money in the budget in some line item, or.
Kim was saying, if I come out of special practice.
If it has to come out of special practice, then definitely.
Yeah, but the whole, like, repairs and maintenance line item, as of last month, had almost, you know, 4,000, you know, almost 4,000 dollars I'm spending it, so.
Okay, I'm gonna have to dig for that. Let me, let me do my quick search, so. I'll send that out to everybody.
Yeah, that's the budget, that's how much is with spec.
Should I, should I move on, or do you need to do more discussion about it?
Well, you can sound very quick about it, I would give, it's only gonna get worse as the. Kind of like, sorry.
Yes, I do. But I mean, right now, we're doing the trap and seal, like, we're doing the, you know, getting rid of them, so if we wanna wait a year, or not a year, a month, we can, otherwise I can. I know that it was 1,200 dollars, what the sealing up was gonna cost.
I mean, that's not, and then, and you have that in those other lines we mentioned.
Right. Yeah, I mean, it seems like that might be the better option. Well, for a long-term solution.
I was thinking that very thing.
That would be great, but allergies.
You do have a cat, though, don't you? Oh, for other people, yeah.
I would think it'd be great if you had a cat, that would be a lot of fun. Yeah, I don't know why it's not coming up when I do my search, I have to look at it again. I'll try and get it after I finish with the support, and then I can log someone else. So that part, talked with PJ Rutter about the new budget. There were concerns about the increases that we wanted to give to the director and the assistant director. The Stevenson Town veterans are gonna have their annual meeting here on the November 2nd at six o'clock, so we'll sponsor that again, we'll do the pizza and the demos, they were very happy to know that we were willing to do that again.
November 2nd.
November 2nd, they're gonna be here at six o'clock, tell them when. So I will take the Dungeons and Dragons kids out for the day.
What helped you do that day?
Well, we need to do, we'll need to get pizza, and we'll need to get the cider nuts, and then drinks. Usually I get the cider nuts. What, what, no, it wasn't what you use, it's like view, or like, not like, not like you, it's the one, if you're on 20, you go off. Bartlett's, thank you, yep, that's mine. So usually.
Get there early.
Get there before Richard. Exactly. November, so really, there's not a lot of setup, it's just getting the tables and the pizza together, and as well, so that's really not a feat enough to do.
So you're bringing up, so you don't get somebody else to do that, or?
I don't think so, I think I should be okay to get it. I'll get pizza from M and M's, or from Jimmy D's, and then we'll do the, we just need to have drinks as well, which I can pick up at Walmart or something.
Still have quite a few, I think, somewhere to.
Yes, we do, we do, yeah.
Especially they don't have a lot of coffee.
Good idea. They also still are interested in having our help at the Veterans Day Service on November 12th, at the park, to just do. Any other reference to stuff, so. No, they're not doing that anymore, they're just gonna do the stuff at the park. The big thing, and then I put in story walk, because I'm gonna do it at the Court Street rail trail, but it's hunting season, so I just put it up. So it's now in our backyard, it looks kind of cute, and we did have someone donate money to put in a new story walk, so we're gonna be able to use, I don't know, be able to use that money for, to pay for it, so that was a really great thing.
No one was hurt.
No one was hurt, and no one would be shot going to, so, exactly, and no one had to, like, break a sweat digging holes, although it was a pain to just put some of them in the ground, because there were rocks and rocks, but it's, it's good.
So it's a Veterans Day event, do we want two board members there?
Sure.
Okay, I can go in there as our studio.
I can go.
That's the November 12th thing?
Yeah.
That's a Saturday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we got two at least there.
And then, I think the other big thing is the Halloween party coming up. The other cool program that's coming up, that I just wanted to make a mention of, and I'm gonna start advertising it, is the discovery of a masterpiece. A Rodan sculpture was hidden in the basement of this place, and the woman is going to give a talk on the discovery of this, like. Get to be a part of it for 25 bucks. Wow, awesome, so it should be a good program.
And when it's out there.
This is gonna, we'll have it here, but we'll also have a virtual link, so we can just zoom in, but it's gonna be on Monday, November 7th at 7:00. No, 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 no. I know.
I happened at Troy.
And I sold.
Can you follow up on this?
Yes.
So can you branch out, is there an update on that?
Not yet, no, I have not heard back from Taylor, so.
And Joey, for placement hours?
Still haven't, yes, I have not found somebody.
I have a potential friend of mine, my people went to work three to six, Tuesday, Wednesday, every.
That would be great.
That was the time.
Yes. Okay, great, thank you.
I asked her about it last night, she's upset that she might be able to do it, so.
Fantastic.
No, it's not, yes. When her husband heard him was grassing, well, more volunteer, I said, no, this comes with a salary. Tell him he had a volunteer.
Yeah, right? All right. And I think that that's pretty much everything for. All righty, turn to your report.
Okay, I'm gonna be very brief. Our financials continue to look quite strong, we have a larger cushion this month with 45,067 dollars, probably because of the income that we got from the gala, which was more than we typically get that time of year. And, you know, when I was looking at this and talking to Kim about it, we say we have that cushion, but we actually have the special projects cushion as well, which is allocated to special projects, but it's 35,000, so in a sense, we have a larger cushion than I think we have been operating under the concept of, so, you know, I think that's a great thing. And very happy that Richard is interested in taking over the treasurer's role.
Question, comment?
How much did the column bring in?
Next up. So fundraising. Excellent transitions, too. You're every one of our members. Okay, so on the fundraising committee, so the 75 anniversary, then. And there's a, there's a, in the file, there's a report. So net was 3,527 dollars, so that included ticket sales, raffle, and the auction information that came in, and flew up ticket purchases. So our, our, our goal had been 2,000 dollars, so we did pretty well on that. Overall, we had hoped for this year, that events would bring in 4,000 dollars, so we're probably gonna get other events of note, so we're pretty good. We had 45 raffles sold, and I actually didn't think this number, we actually had 44 attendees make. Um, we had forty five raffles sold and I actually did this number. We actually had forty four attendees on the check-in list if I counted correctly. Um, our goal was to have fifty five attendees. So I think that's definitely good. Um, and you can see we had a good number of donations. So plenty of people wanted to pay attention to people not attending as well.
Just a different approach next year. Stations where they say, well, we won't do fundraising if you.
Right.
Much money.
Uh, we did get, yes. We did seem to have a lot of positive feedback, um, at least what I heard from folks, uh, both on the, you know, on, in all aspects of it. The event itself, the venue, food. And how people really seemed to like the opportunity to connect. Um, I don't know if anybody else were gonna have a feedback or if there's any other, they need a feedback to incorporate. Overall, if it went well, I appreciate everybody's help to make that go on. That was really good. I put the end table. It was really good. They're really nice to work with too.
Super nice.
Super easy. Really nice. Uh, so, so that was that. Uh, on other fundraising items, so, uh, annual appeal. So as we mentioned during this seventeenth anniversary planning, we are a little concerned that this will impact, um, the, the annual deal. So some people may have just given to that and say, I just gave a few of us. So starting to plan it about, we're gonna get that out, uh, in the December timeframe this year. So we're pushing it back later than we originally planned because of the event, timing of the event. Um, one thing I'm thinking of is a, you know, tying a seventy five dollar donation option as the time of the anniversary. So I have a little bit of donation options. Um, and I, uh, I have some other ideas. I'd rather than talk about a lot of here, is if anybody would like to work with me on this, I would be happy to brainstorm. Just tell me now who wants to be part of it, uh, depending on when we.
Sarah, Patty, Kim?
Um, and if my participation in working a screw up.
We have a lot of bookmarks left. We ordered a bunch of marks. So one thought is to have as a
incentive.
Give incentive, um, for that. So look over those details. That, the work on this has gotta ramp up right now. So um, on the project specific fundraising, so as Kim mentioned, we did have unsolicited online donations for, for the story walk there for my beauty tree. So. So that was cool. But since we saw that on the website. I think that's just gonna have to be more earmarked. Like that. The other thing I wanted to mention in fundraising discussion, and this is really more for, um, ties into the actual type of twenty twenty three. But I'd really like us to research the options for, um, donor management software. Something Melanie was interested in, didn't have a chance to investigate. Um, I think it would really help us be more efficient and also, you know, help us personalize. If we are starting to have need to do some other authoritative fundraising things, it would be good to know what people are giving and track that better or track things like that.
There is a program that we use at the Pittsfield Library that I use for their membership. It's called ELEO. It costs forty nine, forty dollars a month. And I manage four hundred and eighty members. Sends out renewal letters, sends out membership cards, keeps track of donations. We can do all sorts of things.
Cool.
Of ELEO.
I had heard of that once. E L I O.
E L E O.
Oh, okay.
Have you used it?
No, but I, I see that. It's, there are newsletters I get that it's like an advertiser. Now I understand why.
No, and it, it, trust me, it is, is, I've used the one that we have at Bedford Hall, which is a POS. And I've used this one and it's like night and day. And you have like all, you have your membership section and you have your donor section and you can kind of keep track of those.
Is the pricing variable depending on how many donors you have or it's just a flat rate for.
I'm not sure about that. I could find out. Um, we have, I mean, our, our membership has fluctuated. We keep track of about twelve hundred members that we tied up over the last fifteen years. But you know, it keeps up with current membership success. So I don't know if there's any, uh, you know, graduated rate or anything like that. But I don't know. I just know I've got experience with it and it's very user-friendly system.
That's great.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I was gonna ask Kim if she can use that sort of library or other libraries, libraries have.
I do know that you can check with this.
Perfect. We will do that. Okay.
Follow me over the way as well.
See you, see you.
Cool. If anybody was here, we could see my last attempt at personalized segment. Thank you letters from the event. You'll see why I'm like, yeah, we gotta look at this now.
It will create mailings that are all sorts of wonderful. I just had a hundred and fifty or no. Like it only took like three hours.
Wow.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. Good info. Okay, uh, if nothing else, we'll move on to strategic planning.
So finally I have stuff to report on this one. Kim and I met and talked about the strategic plan and how it really is supposed to be a tool for her use, um, in her daily operations and decision-making. And, uh, and we talked about how the, the way she uses it does pass through the spreadsheet as I presented it to her, but there are other, um, ways to use it. A good example of the extreme bush. And they were wanting to let us know if she would like to use it, um, next year, like how, what we should. So I, if you wanna jump in it. I don't really have much at this point. I think that's still something trying to conceptual. And if you want to get together again, let me know.
Okay.
Do that. Um, and then Jennifer and Scott and Sarah got together with me here. And we, we talked about the strategic plan and really using it for twenty twenty three. And one of the things that came up is that, um, in the strategic plan that we have, it's, you know, five-year plan and we should keep using the sort of VR umbrella. There is a strategic objective that needs to be changed, which is sort of not something you always do once you have a strategic plan. But if it's not working and we need it to work, we should talk about it. So the current, um, and this is in the, the report everybody had in those files, but the honor of the service and sacrifices of Steven Town's veterans fulfill the library's mission as a memorial to the veterans of Steven Town. We talked about whether that really is reflective. And so we could just tweak it slightly, like just saying honor and serve Steven Town's veterans and youth to sort of broaden that a little bit. Or we could really tweak it and say something like ensure the library recognizes and serves key populations within the community. But we should decide if, if we want to do that, then we should vote on that change tonight. Because you need to get a work plan in place for next year. And so that would be something that I would want to have as objectives. So I can be working on that. And we can get that all in place in time for next year. So that's one thing. The other thing from the strategic plan is that planning is, we do need to, um, create what would be next year's action plan or work plan or whatever. So we did, um, working with, um, mostly Jennifer, um, come up with a recommendation, um, of a draft of that as well. And that was also in the documents. And I tried to keep it really close to what we have now. Partly because I'm not sure how much we're not doing, you know, or, so it was kind of hard. So I tried to keep it very close to this year's. Jen helped me with some things like this. We're not doing anymore, but this is done or whatever. But, and I put something together for the first two strategic objectives. The, um, expand the library's education and community services and assure the library's continued viability and relevance. So all of that was in the material we had before the meeting. Hopefully people had the chance to look at it and have some feedback on that. And so that's my report.
So it's, as Kim said, I think we need to, tonight, if we can, vote on changing or not changing the third objective. In which direction we're gonna go with that. That way we can go forward and have the action plan. So if people have thoughts on that, we just can discuss first because the action plan will be more, I think. Kim, do you want people to provide feedback on the action plan after the fact?
Yeah, I mean, I think if, if anybody's already looked at it, has something they wanna say, but mostly I would say email me. You know, in the next couple of weeks, I'll work on, um, incorporating what people say. But, um, again, if Kim's going to use it as a tool, we need to have something that she's going to use. And then, so we can get into place what she's, how she's gonna use it. So I think the changes, I like the, the bigger change during the ensure the library recognizes and serves key populations in the community. Keeps it broad.
I think broader, the broader, the better. Yeah.
Yeah. It makes, basically, it makes it work through to be veterans and we're all focusing on that.
And then it's, what about the senior citizens?
Right. What about middle-aged people?
I have to say, I think you had a good comment from somebody saying that they were happy to see that we're doing a program for adults instead of all just children. So that was kind of nice to hear. So.
Okay. Who showed up for the film.
We're doing it. That's okay. It's true. It's our loss. So we have whole, more people. Um, but yeah, I, that would be fine. So on that broader one, it says, um, ensure the library recognizes that serves key populations within the community. And then partner with other organizations to ensure, um, veterans, youth and senior citizens receive services, resources and recognition as appropriate.
So it's got specificity, but it's also, yeah.
And it could say to ensure veterans, youth, senior citizens and other groups.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, actually, yeah. What if I do a program that has to do with. Partnering with other organizations to ensure veterans, youth, senior citizens and others receive services, resources and other groups. Partnering with other, to ensure veterans, youth, senior citizens and other groups receive services, resources and recognition. Do you wanna vote on that in our third?
I might suggest, rather than partnering with, I'm gonna talk about doing it in collaboration.
Working collaboration with?
Or doing something in collaboration.
But the word that has a sentence. We wanna say.
He's in collaboration rather than part.
Yes. So just collaborate with.
Yeah, you can collaborate with. The point is that we're working with other groups, but we're driving. That's my.
So does collaborate say that? I'm not, I'm just asking. Does it? Yeah?
No, not to me. To me, it's the same. You're working together. It's a partnership. It doesn't say one person.
Partnership.
A little about the language, but. But I, I. We're, I'm coming. Well, you want a better word than partnering, as much as you say. Partnering suggests having other people do it. This is our plan and this is what we're doing with this institution. But partnering also implies that if someone comes to us with a good idea, that we can run with that too.
Sure.
I have.
But so does collaborate. Yeah.
Yeah. I get that. And the reason, the reason I raised this is we have too much detail, but in any event, we are constantly as the agency tasked doing stuff by the legislature. And there's a real difference between partnering and collaboration. If we're tasked with doing something, we've gotta do it. If they say you reach out to others, then you reach out to others in a way to the extent that you find willing to partner this. But partnering is more, it sort of requires.
More equal.
Yeah, it requires people, other people do so. And you never know what kind of cooperation or interest.
So collaborate with other organizations to ensure veterans, youth, senior citizens and other groups receive services, resources and recognition.
I, I keep on saying like, what we wanna do is we wanna do this in collaboration with others. Provide leadership and collaboration. That's, that's sort of, it's sort of like, we're tasking ourselves to target and identify and extend services. We're gonna do that in collaboration with. Initiate and collaborate.
That's in collaboration with other organizations and ensure veterans.
This is a pro. I'm sorry.
No.
Richie, what did you, you just said.
Initiate. Initiate and collaborate.
How about initiate and collaborate with other organizations to ensure that seems to like take the leadership a little bit?
I initiate and collaborate with other organizations to ensure veterans, youth, senior citizens and other groups receive services, resources and recognition.
Your action plan focuses on what you're gonna do in order to achieve that. That's much easier. This is because you drive the bus.
Yes. Okay.
Yes. I have some of it, but I don't have. Thank you.
Okay, so shall we vote on making, so, uh, so making, I'll make a motion that we adopt the change as just stated by Kim.
Can you read it one more time? I'm sorry.
Yeah. Ensure the library recognizes and serves key populations within the community. Initiate and collaborate with other organizations. Initiate what? Initiate and collaborate with other organizations to ensure veterans, youth, senior citizens and other groups receive, receive services, resources and recognition as appropriate. I think initiate is a dangling thing.
Yes, because you have to initiate something in collaboration with.
Or you can say initiate programs, initiate services and collaboration with.
Initiate programs and services in collaboration with.
Actually, be specific. Like, I, I don't know that we wanna.
Yeah.
Initiate services.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I think the simpler collaborate, like if we don't like partner, because partner sounds a little bit formal, like.
Yeah, collaborate with other org, so ensure library, the library recognizes and serves key populations within the community. Collaborate with other organizations to ensure veterans, youth, senior citizens and other groups receive services, resources and recognition.
That works.
All right, Sarah. So I made that motion.
I second it. Hi.
So I will now add to the document that's there with some stuff for that third thing. But I also look to all of you to provide feedback on this first two and to also provide some ideas.
So you're looking at collaboration.
She's initiating some collaboration.
Actually, I'm looking for some partnership here. I want a more relationship with people. People come in to do their part.
By what date would you like this?
Let me look at the calendar. At the 12th of November, after the absolute dead drop, like, but before that would be super much appreciated because I will just keep working as people as any.
Hold it for a moment. So let's see. Um, major projects. So you guys should jump in if I've misrepresented this after. Okay, so I think it's hard to keep track of what we've already updated. Let everybody know. So we've gone through the process of Paul May as we received the building system reports. We received a proposed drawing, which I think we had looked at at a previous meeting. Thinking back with some specific analysis in terms of square footage with the proposals. Um, and then we got initial estimate for remations, which is what we've done prior to last meeting. Gave us a little bit better idea of what kind of cost we were anticipating. Those estimates did not all have exactly specifics of what systems changes were included in the different phases. So high level, um, basically we reviewed all of this and our recommendations are as follows. And issue, we're just gonna talk about what approach is, we'll have feedback on that. And again, we'll talk about what approach is, we'll have feedback on that because we now need to go back to Paul May's again and say, okay, here's. Here's what we're thinking. So we want to revise the proposal to focus on some key changes that we think are more feasible. And take an incremental approach on this. So the dollar amounts that were associated with that full proposal of. Renovate the existing space to.
Let me, let me jump in just for a moment. Just to refocus on what we had. We spoke to Paul about what we wanted for the library. We went through a whole bunch of different iterations of that. At the end of the day, coming back with a phased approach, three phases, maybe four, depending on how you put it up. But the major issues were, they were talking about, which were developed was change the look of the front. Move the circulation desk over to the other side of the library. Switch the, let's see, switch the children's areas to the front portion of the old building. Put in a youth area where the children area is recon, and then then move on to. Sort of reconfigure some of the shelving space in the back so that you have a computer area sort of back over here, as I recall.
One of them, yeah.
And then reconfigure this area to create, move the kitchen into a separate area and.
Making it bigger.
Making it a little bigger. So those were the three kinds of things. The staging was do the front, maybe do the, we'll do the ramp handicap access into the front. So that you would have have access, independent access to this room and then to the library. You have a little bigger lobby. At that, that's the first pay phase. That was about 175 or something like that. The second phase was to flip the children's area and the back area. That was even more.
That was the circulation.
And the circulation and then the flipping and then work on this area. Basically, I think the consensus of folks who were in the room was changing the facade and creating a big lobby space. Didn't really do much in terms of services, was expensive and was a sort of a weird place to start. Not from the architectural standpoint, but just from. I think we also recognize that the moving of various areas of main layer of library would create a lot of dislocation. It would be sort of a mess and it would be hard to work around. It seemed to us that reworking this area was probably, you get more bang for your buck. It would be less dislocating and it would show better. It's probably easier to. I think that that's, is that fair? So that's, that's sort of what was going on at our last meeting. It was sort of a realization that it's showtime. We've got all of this sort of suggestions. And they didn't really work all that well for us. And before we started to engage Paul, which I want to bring it back to the board and share our feelings about what was done. Which is not to say that we didn't like the work. It sort of only makes sense. Well, you're talking about what an eight, 10 year project would take forever and requires a lot of money. And the stuff up front didn't really give you that much, at least five years didn't give you that much value.
And, and the expansion of the community room that we all think would be community centric and, and good for, for the community. Also included an additional community room with.
Yes.
This, this stuff, all the sink and kitcheny stuff moves into that room. So this room is wider, bigger, and now we, we can have other things going on in that second room.
And I think we also wanted to probably have Paul focus on trying to make this space both useful as community room. And then incorporate other more mundane library services so that it can double, provide double function. It's not just sort of a meeting space, but it actually gets integrated into the library. So that's, that's sort of the background and that's sort of like.
And so we wanted to really, you know, as Scott mentioned, the part of the problem too is just with the way it was phased out. It sort of felt like it would be hard sell for the public as well to try to apply what's so important about giving yourself an extra big lobby. Like there is at the start, it's something that we can build on because people can see some progress. They can see a benefit to that. You can see we have additional room for programming, for activities, people to be in.
And it's a lot less disruptive to the day to day as well.
Right. The other thing is the outdoor space is part of this as well. So we wanted to consider that. So in addition to the community room, there's some outdoor space proposals that we think will help make that feel more usable for our own programs. Summer camp stuff, so they could.
Like a stage.
Yeah, better use of the outdoor space. There's also some, sort of something we can do in parallel, you know, with Paul involved, but that doesn't necessarily involve a lot of these larger plans. Which is really just go ahead and move forward with less shelving, find out those options and start to pursue that. The other larger system part that we wanted to also talk to him about was the furnace changes. So they have proposed some changes to the furnace system that would be beneficial in many different ways, including giving us some additional space. Even if we're just using it as storage, if we weren't going to do that major with it, it would be a great benefit for storage. So we have to talk to him about how that would work, you know.
Yeah. Wasn't clear in what we got and what they planned to do with the fourth phase and how that would work.
And the other thing we talked about was just in terms of timing. We thought that we would probably be trying to target the grant cycle that would provide funding in June of 2024 at this point. So. But that's sort of what we're targeting, so.
Anything, I mean, all of this makes sense from a library service perspective and also from a fundraising perspective. But is there anything that something else has to be done first for something else to be done, like, like architecturally or facility wise? Is there anything that, that maybe? You know, because it really does, I mean, as far as library services or fundraising, it makes way more sense to propose that.
The only thing that would be different would be that if we wanted to change the kids' room and put it in the front where we thought about it. So that would have to have, if we do that, then we would have to figure out a way to close off that door so that it's not easy access to the public. You know, we'd have to then change all that other stuff. But that's so much at this point and right now, yes, things are working. Yeah, the community or the children's room is small. It's still working though. It's not like it's hard to, yes. You can get nine toddlers in the, in the kids' gate.
And also depending on how this gets, this could become.
This could become the children's room or it could become, I don't know that it would necessarily ever become the children's room, but it's definitely more space.
Or, right?
Kids' activities.
Exactly, exactly. And it isn't, I mean, it already is, but again, it gets like teenage at work. Hopefully, we won't have 22 kids here because there's no way we'll hit them on. But, you know, so it's like that kind of a thing. So if we can make this place bigger. And if we were to try and go ahead with changing circulation on, we have to, we have to go ahead with the front stuff first.
This all makes a lot of sense. Is it going to insult or upset Peterson's terribly?
No, I don't think so.
One, no, and two, work for us. Essentially, we need something that works for us.
I think he's gotten the hint.
Not jumping at the bit to jump right in.
This was feeling, not quite the right fit for us, but in, in many ways. And so I don't think it'll be a shock that we're trying to come back and do this. And I think he knows that we like the work of that. And there's the grander plan too that he proposed, which is the, you know, addition as well. It's all lovely.
Yes.
You know, we're, yeah.
Any other comments or suggestions before we go ahead and move forward with this approach and bring back more as we get it? That's something a little bit slow work with it, so. Lot and long. So do you want me to get in touch with you more after, after all, after we've talked about all this stuff?
People are comfortable with like pursuing this kind of big and changing the station picture.
Brand and marketing?
Uh, yeah, I don't have very much. I did my Caldecott lecture on the 13th, which went.
Really wonderful.
Oh, thank you, Scott.
I could have thought of a better idea.
It was Scott's idea and it wasn't, it was. Oh, thank you, yeah. And we had 10 attendees. They happen to be all people that I know and invited. Who, who cares, right? They, they came and I think they had a good time. So that was good. We are, I have an email drafted that I plan to send out tomorrow to the attendees of the last new resident welcome program. Because people have been saying that they want to get together again and have a more informal potluck. And we wanted to offer the community room as an opportunity to do that. So I'm just going to reach out and see if anyone's interested in doing that. And then once we have the number, if it's not too daunting, which I doubt it will be. Send, send out some dates that work for us and, and try to get that going. And then in the January, February timeframe, I talked to Jen today and rather than having another new resident welcome event. Because there probably aren't too many new residents since that, that one. Yeah, right. Just a broader event to get together and then do another new resident, probably around the same time next summer. So that is that.
In case you haven't noticed, we love it and it's also jumped on the agenda right now. So they're doing a new resident welcome. So we really started the trend around here.
Really?
It's family, we love it.
At the library to do it?
Yep.
More on Saturday, we're having a Dumber Lunch.
And I'm going to get our brand meetings back on schedule. I skipped it this month, sort of, probably because of the Caldecott thing. I can only focus on one thing at a time.
The next one is Newbury. That would be so cool.
It would be cool. I've got it.
I guess I just had one more question. Is there any sort of marketing that we need to do for the upcoming holiday? I know you already have a lot out. I saw the stuff at the post office. I've seen the, the website stuff. For the Halloween party. You're, you're all set with that? So probably the next thing is the holiday market. We need to get our heads around what we want to do with that. Will we do a press release or?
You should do a press release. You should do flyers.
I did do a, looking for market, you know.
Up to nine vendors from my account. I needed to talk to them. And I sent to four other people, I haven't heard of any of them. Yeah, so. Are you, yeah, I was just, are you doing that stuff?
Or maybe both.
Okay.
So that's 10 vendors?
No, that's still nine.
Oh, that's still nine.
Yeah. So we'll see. And then I had three others I was going to ask you about. Because I was thinking, what was it, 12, about 12 tables?
Yeah, and I have two people who need to communicate to talk about. They're both service as well, so.
Okay.
And it's $20 a table, right?
There you go.
So just be gave me it's awesome. I don't know if this gets forever, but.
Can I throw that on a wheel or do I just store it?
I don't think you can throw that on a wheel. I don't know what to be about.
Is it a roll or?
No, it's, it's got like, so, so.
But it was, it was like a cup that they cut two Vs out of. Like a sponge, like, oh, it goes.
Yeah, it's like a sponge. It's awesome.
Telling you that's hard.
Collaborative.
Okay, so in terms of flyers, are we, is the marketing group voluntary to help with that?
Yes. The marketing group.
I, I know I have old flyers from past markets, so.
That would be really helpful just to sort of see how we promoted it in the past, yeah.
And I can definitely pull those up.
Okay.
Even if you just use, again, you are.
I'm kind of hoping to recruit my neighbor Bobby because it's going to be a lot easier stuff to do, to be a flyer cutter upper.
Oh, great.
I feel like that would be a good thing for him.
That would be awesome.
Yes.
Is he from Wetha?
Yes, he is.
No, I didn't. It can't be chowder.
Oh, my God.
It's not cream. So you're thinking that with it?
All right, so we got recruitment. So Richard's our big recruitment story. I don't know if there's any other updates from anybody else.
Well, and the new volunteer as well.
And the volunteer, yeah, yeah. So.
And then, yeah, possible new employee.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
So shall we, Richard, are you?
I.
Are you, yes?
I, I guess.
We haven't talked you out of it.
Y'all seem to have a, have a good way of. Most of the organizations I'm involved with are not really this interested. Well, friends of the first year. We fight about signs. We disagree about the book sale.
I would say, shall we take a vote then? Okay, so. I don't remember how we usually do this.
I don't think you need to leave.
No, no.
Well, if I vote no, I don't want Richard to know.
Discuss it at the next book club. I'll take the term club.
So I'll make a motion that we vote Richard in as a new board member.
I second it.
Okay, Paul in favor?
Hi.
And I know that you were reluctant to.
You know what, he brings cookies to the book club.
I was told I was supposed to bring cookies.
Tell me wrong, it's like a slip.
I, I wouldn't want to think I was likely. I'm bribing the group. Absolutely, there will be.
Do we need to be specific about him also becoming treasurer? Or does that have to be voted or?
Yeah, actually, I think we could vote on our officers. So initiate this newbie as our treasurer.
Yes, we are.
We should do it now.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that Richard also be, uh, uh, become treasurer.
And you'll be secretary.
And I will remain secretary.
I second that. Paul in favor?
Hi.
So let's do youth and then after youth, we'll go on the contract and then.
I'll talk about the Halloween.
Yeah, that's.
And I'll make the hearty, I'm sorry. We are going ahead with the Halloween party as we did in 2019. So everything will be inside of the fire hall. We will have games and activities from two to three. From three to four, we will have a costume contest. And from four to five, we will have treasure treaty. Can I serve a board member as a judge? For those who have not been to the Halloween party, as it was pre-pandemic. We have different categories like zero to four, four to eight, so forth, all the way up to 18 and over. We stock everything. We have first the little kids, everybody kind of, the games are on the outside of the fire hall room. Everybody kind of makes a big circle. The group marches around a few times. And we have judges from different organizations within the town, historical society, usually Larry.
PJ's the only one I have as a definite yes.
Okay.
And what's the date?
It's 29. It's twenty ninth. The trumper tree is outside. Yes.
I mean, I know how we do it in New Lebanon, that we have like sixty cars.
It's more, it started out as just a party and then the trumper tree was kind of added on. So a judge, there's three different categories. Most creative, scariest and serious. So for each, each group, you would have to break down which one we thought, and then.
Is there a panel of judges or just?
Yes. So it wouldn't just be you.
This start, it starts at two and goes to five.
Party starts at two and the costume contest will start around three.
Three to four. I, I can be, I can be there from three to four for sure.
And you would like to be a judge?
I can be a judge, yeah. Do I get to come in costume also?
Yes, yes, yes.
Robes.
Robes? I got witches robes. That's it.
Did you guys ask Chief Corleone? Cause I know last year we did it and then we didn't get invited into the room at time for voting. If you want to ask him, that would be great. Okay.
If you want to talk about someone from the fire.
Right, so kind of just. I still have to, um, talk to Pat. I did talk to, um, Amy and Pepper, Matt, and usually are there because they both, uh, Tammy has stuff she's happening this year. Everett was kind of like, uh, so I don't think that they're going to be able to. So our usual vote choose, and Larry also said he's possibly maybe, but they might have something happening. So I don't know about Larry.
Larry effort?
Yeah, so if we can get Chief Corleone, maybe someone from the historical society, that would be a good thing.
Otherwise, within the Halloween party, if anybody wants to do a trunk, they're welcome to do it.
Kind of start with about four.
Four, we asked the trunks to be there around three or three, 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 like you, we have to park you and then kind of people are dismissed from the fire hall and go about.
Hopefully they'll have some candy leftover from the, the one that is, we love it this Friday night.
Right.
And our church is doing it, so.
Yeah.
We should have a lot of candy.
Yeah, so you can decorate your trunk. You can, there is a, the judges don't have trunks now.
I think we do more.
So there is a prize for the best truck also.
Are we doing the? Are we doing the jack-o'-lantern thing this year as well? Cause that was judged also. We're not going to judge it. Okay.
Last year we got like thirteen people to vote. It was not one good time.
And the other thing that happened is last year we had a lot of, um, community donations for prizes, like from Norte and for Val. And because we just asked for that for the, um, gala, we didn't feel like we could go.
Right, yeah, yeah.
So the prizes are, I think, for the costume contest or March candy buyers. And we talked about doing something a little more adultish for the truck.
For the one best.
For the one best truck.
How many prizes do, do we need for, um, you, you, you have like three categories in three separate age groups?
Three categories, but it's not three groups. I think it's at least four. I usually just go more and get like those massive giant.
It's mostly kids, so it's very few eighteen and older.
Okay.
Kids are appreciative of.
So I, I.
Okay.
Okay, and they're happy with that?
Yeah.
Yeah. I am.
And actually. You know, what's terrible is that last year, most of the kids didn't stay to get their prizes. So we had prizes. I had them in my office like a long time.
Trader Joe's has got like a two pound or one pound candy bar, which is actually pretty good chocolate. And it's sort of cool. If that's something that you're interested in, I can pick it up. PJ's also huge, you know, and PJ's is like the, the full-size candy bars.
Trader Joe's are really good though.
Yeah, no, they're, they're. If you want to be fancy, I mean.
Yeah, no, that's the question.
Yeah, for the basket truck, there's some in the.
That's a good idea. So maybe, yeah, get one.
I mean, these things are big. Yeah.
I would pick up one for.
Toblerones or something like that.
You can pick one up for the, um, for the trunks, like a prize for the trunks and then give the kids the, you know.
The normal size.
And then hurties or Reese's, yeah.
Just, just.
What's that?
They just, tell me what they do. Oh, yeah. It's like, I need to be direct.
The other thing we need for the Halloween party, if people would like, is donations of snacks. We have a few parents. Well, Melanie. So. Yeah, yeah, like cookies are even, you know, just let me know.
I can do that.
Okay, so yeah, just when you decide what you want to do, just send an email so we know.
Okay, and just have them here by two?
Have them here by two, yeah.
Yes.
And we have teenagers too.
Does it need to be something? It doesn't have to be something we make, right?
It doesn't have to, no.
Okay.
No, not at all.
Okay, cool.
But if you needed to drop it, leave it the day before, I could also.
Or we could put it in the fridge if it's frigid bowl.
Yeah, yeah. Um, I think we have enough volunteers to games, but if anybody would like to help, just in general. Pretty much, we went and we got the pumpkins today. We have seven new pumpkins.
I took a picture of Ari and Rebecca. They stole the pockets that you get, so.
So some of them will be used for teammates during it, where they were having teammate, they will be carving pumpkins and watching like Beetlejuice or something.
Oh, cool.
And having pizza and candy.
Oh, they have a craft to do if they want to.
We'll see. Last time we had eleven kids register and twenty-two kids sign up. So we really have no idea.
I have ten kids right now signed up.
And then we'll, Kim will give out the rest on Saturday to community members for the.
Yeah, I want to be here on Saturday. We're just gonna, I just, Lynn's gonna work on Saturdays, so I, I'm just gonna let her know to just say, take a pumpkin. Take a couple of pumpkins. I'm not gonna, last year I did it so that everybody in the family could get, once if it's six people, it can take six. It was not a big deal, so I'm gonna suck up. So I'm just gonna say, take, because at this point, it's easier. But the pumpkins are, I had it so that giving them out on Saturday and then getting them back on Sunday. Because Monday is, like, Monday is Halloween. So I'm asking for all of them to come back by Monday and then that way we can set up or all set up or if anyone wants to help set up at this point, that would be nice on Sunday. So.
So we sent the proposed, the proposal to PJ and her back. He called me. I had a couple of concerns. One of them is after a five hundred, uh, twenty and sixteen percent raise for the director and assistant director. They have a standard two percent raise for town employees. And he didn't feel that that was appropriate to camp employees more than that. My thought was that the, the, the director and assistant directors' salaries were, um, up in the same since twenty nineteen and were the. So in twenty nineteen, the.
I was just thinking how it would be if it was two percent here.
So that's what I'm gonna, that's my proposal is that we say, okay, well, we don't need to do a twenty percent raise, but how about a six percent raise?
Or eight if it's next year, right? Yeah.
Yeah. We should be. Sorry.
They are gonna have a hard time with that.
So I, I don't, yeah, I don't think we need to do a retroactive thing. I think we should say for twenty twenty-three, can we give them a six percent, four or six percent, if we agree that this is the route we're taking. Or six percent raise, because, um, the role really, the roles require a lot of work out. They do a lot of preparation, a lot of shopping, a lot of, a lot of stuff, clean up all that. Um, and then going forward, we would raise.
Two percent each.
Two percent each year. So that's my proposal. I haven't decided. Uh, I'll have to call.
We're gonna have, yeah, basically the town's concerned about the budget for this year. This, this year, they're like, the paperwork will be okay. Next year, we have no idea where we're gonna be. Uh, we could be problems, so they're trying to be as conservative as they can this year to make sure that it's. So they were concerned with the extra amounts.
Yeah, so, but the other, so that was the one. We could decide to just let it go, keep their salaries the same, although I would say that, um, we want to retain.
And, yeah, and I mean, what you, um, figured out as far as how much they need per hour, that was only for camp hours.
Oh, yeah.
Putting in the hours that they do beforehand. Prepping, yeah, I don't just mean prepping that day, but, you know, we started making planning and having meetings and they do a lot of work.
So we really. Probably not, probably not, if you go back.
Figure out what their hours are and it's minimum wage hours.
Well, we've talked about, we've tried to figure out what the extra hours are and they have, they're kind of hard to put a number on it, but I think somebody, I don't know, they said, I don't know. You guys spend over, yeah, the other.
There's a, I'm doing forty hours.
No.
Per week.
No.
So that's why I did the forty hours, figuring that back. Yeah, I did that basically forty hour week. So that, yeah, it kind of added in any extra stuff.
Yeah.
So that's where that number came from. So, but yeah, they're making not a lot more than what the council should be. I mean, especially.
Senior council, it's one of their own wage.
So it seems worth going back to, I mean, we're, we're going back with the. I think, I know, but I don't think we should not.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, totally.
I think we should ask for six percent.
Yeah.
And if that was a mark, four percent, etc., but, um, I think we need to give them something.
If we can't, or even if we can't get six percent, but is there a way that the library could supplement, like, give a bonus to?
They're not library employees, they're town employees.
So we could, like, supplement it.
And we don't really want to, because then we're starting that whole.
Yeah.
Thing of, okay, now the library.
Could we ask for eight percent, which would be two percent each year if they had gotten a two percent raise each year, since it'll be twenty twenty-three, right? So from nineteen to twenty twenty-three. I, I think we should ask for eight, because if they come back, maybe we'll get six.
Right, yeah. Okay, so I can call PJ. Say that the other issue was in the operating expenses. They approved increasing our budget by, we, we asked for an extra fourteen hundred and they approved they didn't say where, but we have to figure that. He kind of was like, you can figure out how to make that work. I don't know if that, I understood that correctly. We had a very quick conversation.
They just want you to redo the budget there to.
In the monra, they don't care really how much we spend on paper plates and snacks versus glue and markers and field checks. They just want to.
What did we ask for again? I'm sorry.
We, sorry, I'm.
If it's in your report, I can just get it from there.
We asked for thirteen thousand one hundred for contractual expenses. They approved twelve thousand. So they're saying there will be eleven hundred.
Yeah, so we asked for thirty-one thousand. Oh, yeah, after the, yeah, we asked for thirty-three nine fifty-eight. My thought is that we can figure that out. We have, we, we, you know, bumped up the snack and activity budgets pretty like generous.
And maybe the food is going to be better timing.
Yeah, so we, so we aim high with that and also we had talked about, um, the t-shirts, doing the t-shirt logo. Things like that. So I think that part is. Accept that. And the other issue was the, um,
Right, so revenue, previously, so pre-pandemic, our revenue was quite a bit because of out-of-town campers. So we made a turn, we, I think, the town made quite a bit. Um, it was up to, I think in twenty nineteen, we had twenty-two hundred dollars in revenue from out-of-town campers. We haven't gotten that since twenty nineteen. So I don't think we can rely on that anymore. Problem two is when we end up getting the check from the county and which tax year, which year it goes towards, because right now, we've got, they already got two thousand dollars from the town, from the county as reimbursement, which is going into this year's, um, budget. So we get, if they get the twenty-nine hundred, that if they get reimbursed from the county in this year again, then they're not going to have anything again until next year. So it just was confusing for us to where it was. So I just they are getting seven hundred dollars from out-of-town campers and twenty-nine hundred dollars from the county is what we should be getting for the year twenty twenty-three. So that's where we are in terms of that. Two thousand for the. Even actually, the one family that the seven hundred comes from, one of the kids is aging out, so we'll only get three fifty.
I mean, it is very possible that we could have your, I don't know, that we just can't guarantee it, but we didn't, last year, we purposely didn't advertise out of town because of COVID. Want large numbers. We wanted to keep it small. So it has to grow again.
Right now. Now, it's a really important time. Can you guys also do fundraising that you find, or you thought you could do that?
No, yeah. I like, we don't have a bank account.
Yes.
And I don't have a bank account. When we, when we spend money, Kim makes a voucher and I'll pass it back. So as far as fundraising and, you know, keeping funds, we don't have funds.
But you can get donations for food.
We have gotten, and we have gotten donations of money too. There was a grandfather who gave us two hundred dollars, which. Yeah, so something like that, we might buy something. We talked about buying some lawn games for the camp. Something that's not in this budget.
Yeah, so it's in, it's in our bank account right now, but it's earmarked.
Yeah.
The camp, so.
I'm gonna have to circle back with somebody about.
Yeah, I, I, I got lost.
Yeah, unfortunately.
I was trying to match it off of this. It's in there. It's the thirty-three hundred from the county is what it looks like.
No, that's, I'll explain it to you, because it's marked in as non-SML funds.
Right, and you got a youth program, town reimbursement, just thirteen hundred and then how it's campers and so.
Right, and then the expenses that we do on the flip side are, it's listed under non-SML expenses, so, but yeah.
So that's it. That was. I'll follow up with PJ about asking for a percent increase in salaries and then everything else will. And then the work, the next workshop's on the twenty. And then the work, the next workshop's on the twenty fourth, right?
What is that, when they were going to the average? Yeah, I don't think that's a workshop. Yeah, they, they needed the new numbers and like, this is impossible. We said I could call them before my. Right, the budget's due. Wasn't that the budget was due on like. There's something about the budget being due to the county. And they had to have the budget vote like immediately and then.
October twenty-four, budget workshop for the preliminary budget, so the previous one was for the tentative budget, this one's for the preliminary budget. And then November seventh is the public hearing and then the fourteenth, a special meeting to adopt the budget. So, yeah.
Yeah, so, well, that was my plan, but so I had that right, I had to call them before. I can send you right now.
Yeah, we can just, what we'll do is we'll just put the new numbers rework.
Yeah.
Do we have anything to discuss on the wage adjustment agreement?
It's always agreed with.
Okay. Can we just, I make a motion to adapt or to whatever, sign the agreement for Robinson for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-six? Seven, okay, on favor? So Scott has abstained, Sarah.
Okay.
All right, thank you Rebecca.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, administrative committee.
So I have nothing really new, we have that internet policy approval, are we, you know, placed a vote for that tonight? Yes, well, not at all. And I, I, I'd like to reach out to you just to schedule some time, because I know we've got also like your review. That's supposed to be coming up, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's touch base on that one too, I can't remember now, did I send you stuff or not?
I don't think so, it's not, it's not still in my inbox.
Okay.
So that doesn't mean anything, just, it means if you sent it to me, I swiped one, I shouldn't have.
You say you swiped.
I swiped when I shouldn't have.
Not a good thing.
I know, I know.
Um, cool. So it sounds like, did, from what you said, Sandy Nathan wants to reconvene with the committee. Um, you have changes or reviews and proposals for what, did you change for the internet policy?
Yeah, I think so. I don't know when. She definitely has it in her head, it's still there, but.
So you probably just have to set up a meeting and ask for her to come.
Anything else on that? No, you were just supposed to tell us. The old business, the North Pole printer copy, or?
I have not heard from them yet. So I'm gonna pop down my list of the calls.
Okay. You're not even publicating, you're going in, so now. You had a comment, you have to hold it, sorry. Uh, any, any other openness? Any new business?
Um, do we want to, if we are trying to do the new berry collection, maybe that's something we can fundraise or out.
I thought that too.
Just like list all the books and have people contribute.
Yeah, buy your favorite.
I think people would do that.
That's a good idea.
I'd do that, yeah.
Yeah, I would too, that's about it.
Yeah. Actually wrote the Congress, we're gonna vary.
I'll find out which ones we have already and I will make a list.
How, do you know how long the new berry collection and the, that medal has been awarded, is it sort of similar to the Caldecat, like in the thirties or?
Yeah, I think so.
And what are our thoughts about putting like a little tag in, in the book saying that it was, you know?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, we can definitely do that, we have, I don't know if you've seen, but it's a lot of our books now, we have a thing, a plaque and it says. Donated a memory of. I say, you know, when someone donates a memory of.
Do we do it for birthdays?
Birthday?
We just do it for kids' birthdays in Detroit. And if children would donate a book, then that kid would be the first one to check it out.
Oh, I love that.
But, and then it says, you know, donate in honor of birthday of his name.
Oh, I like, I wonder how that goes with. Not privacy, but information, like do you put the kid's birthday in?
Most is donated in honor of, and if it's a United States birthday, in honor of, so it's a special day.
The first new berry medal was awarded.
Now, so it's sooner, it was sooner than Caldecat, Caldecat was thirty-eight.
She swore off. Any other new business? I think we're gonna adjourn fifteen minutes earlier than we normally do, so. Everybody.
Ah.
A motion to adjourn?
I motion.
I said.
Wonderful, thank you everybody.